Should we, should we sign in again Carol?
Yeah, just give me a second and then I'm gonna let you do that if you don't mind. Okay, alright, if you don't mind starting again, that would be great, thank you.
So roll call, this is Mike Steers.
Bob Murphy.
Bob Torsho.
Mary Sutel.
Mark Katie.
Helen Woodhouse.
Thank you, so we have a quorum.
Six of Nine.
And the, the first order of business is the minutes from our July 7th meeting. And I have one correction for Bob Green gave me a call with regard to the motion on the Faria application and wanted to, he felt that he had voted no not in favor. So he would like us to change that. Which is the item one under special subjects, the third paragraph, the second line from the bottom. Other than that, no changes.
He voted nay. He voted nay.
He did.
Yes.
I make a motion that we make that correction and submit the minutes as, as corrected.
Second, Mark Katie.
Is anyone opposed to that? Thank you.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there, okay?
Okay.
I am as well.
That's Bob Torsho who said that.
Yes.
And let the record reflect although you cannot see him, Richard Ross is in attendance. You can't see him but he's there.
Okay, great. So then we move on to the regular meeting tonight and the, we have no old business, no new business. And we're involved in special subjects which is petitions to the zoning board. And the first, first petition is that of Sukonat Light Real Estate LLC. And I see David Loth here who was presenting and Mrs. Jewell is also present. David, would you like to?
Thank you, thank you for having me here and please call me Lucinda.
Oh my.
That's like my, my mother's Mrs. Jewell. And my grandmother.
So David Loth here on behalf of Lucinda and I'm also on with Don Maderos who has been handling the civil engineering and surveying work for the application. So just a little bit of a background here, so on June 2nd, the planning board did approve the administrative subdivision lot merger of the two lots that Lucinda owns. And you'll also recall that that approval was really going to be in a band pending the, hopefully the approval by the zoning board on August 19th, we have a hearing before the board. So basically what was accomplished was that the board approved merger of two existing lots of record which were non-conforming by dimension insofar as they are both, each of them are less than the required two acres. So, and we thank you for that, that prior approval. So the, the objective tonight is for the planning board to make a determination as to whether or not the, the application for variance and special use permit is consistent with the goals and policies of the Little Compton Comprehensive Plan and, upon your determination of that, that will be transmitted to the, to the zoning board. So with that, I just want to give the, like the big 10,000 foot overview of what's going on here. So Mrs. or Lucinda owns again these two lots, lot 81-1 and lot 82. Presently, there is a three-bedroom dwelling on lot 81-1. Plan is
It's actually a five-bedroom though I know the septic is zoned for three.
Okay, so, so the, the plan is to demolish the existing structure, which again is on lot 81-1. And to construct a new dwelling that will be situated a bit further more and centered within the lot, which will be the new lot, the combined lot which will now consist of just over three acres. Okay, so by doing that, what's going to happen is that the house will be moved more towards the center of the developable area. But developable, I mean on outside of the wetlands. And the question is, in terms of what we're doing, there's, there's a few elements of relief that are needed to accomplish that. And I'm just going to very quickly tell you what the, what we're speaking to obtain from the zoning board and then tell you why in our estimation, this redevelopment is vastly superior in terms of both ecological and environmental concerns than what is presently existing on lot 81-1. So if we're permitted to proceed, the current layout of the structure will require relief from the 25-foot rear yard setback. And
On the west?
It would be on the east.
It seems to be background noise coming from someone.
Hold on a second, honey, I think they can hear their TV.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, much better. Okay, so the, the first element of relief is going to be relief from the rear yard 25-yard, 25-foot setback. In addition, the existing structure has an attached garage. And the, what we're going to be doing is that, that that slab, that footprint slab is going to remain. And there's going to be a small approximately 390-foot structure built, we're going to demolish the existing garage structure and a small studio-type structure for personal use and storage will be erected on that existing slab. Not the entirety of the slab, it's going to be about a 10-foot area of slab that's abandoned close to the wetlands. In addition, there is a small garden shed in the front yard that is not quite within, that's encroaches into the front yard setback, so we're going to be seeking relief for the continued existence of the, the garden shed within the front yard. And Don, I think I've covered everything in terms of the dimensional relief, we're going to be needing some relief from CRMC in terms of, and the wetlands setback. Something that, you know, we'll be pursuing upon approval of the various relief needed from the town. So, Don, have I missed anything on the relief? I think, I think I've covered everything.
I, I think you have David, yeah.
Okay. So, so why is it that we all maintain that, that what we're doing is in conformance with the Little Compton Comprehensive Plan? So there's three primary reasons for that. The first is that, as I previously indicated, this redevelopment includes the merging of two pre-existing lots to create one large, larger lot that would be in conformance with the applicable town reg and so far it would be about 3.09 acres. So it would be a conforming lot. And throughout the Little Compton Comprehensive Plan, the emphasis is on low-density residential development on large lots. So this is a key element in the comp plan and it set forth policy LU, land use number 1.1. And it's recurring throughout the entirety of the comp plan in terms of identifying this goal. This is important insofar as, as we all know on, on this call, we don't have public infrastructure for, for water and so. So density is a real issue. And the, the lower the density, the better. We've got a groundwater situation that is very valuable and sensitive to us. The more homes that are out there on smaller lots that certainly a recipe for potential issues. So, so that's one key element here of consistency with the comp plan, which is in this case, we're merging the two lots. We're, we're adhering to that goal of low density by having one dwelling on two, on the two lots, the two lots will then become one lot. So you would be lose, so Lucinda would be losing upon this merger, the ability to develop that lot 80, 82, which otherwise could be developed as a separate lot. And the concept of density is, as is probably apparent to you, you know, she could re, redevelop the existing structure and then either sell or develop a secondary primary residence on lot 82. That would be a scenario that really would be, you know, something that, that would be less desirable, at least from a Little Compton Comp Plan perspective insofar as that certainly would be enhancing density as opposed to lowering. That's, that's item number one, the second item is the protection of water quality, groundwater. As a result of this development, and we're working very closely with Scott Rabideau of Natural Resources Inc., Lucinda will be imposed vegetation buffer around the perimeter of the wetlands. This feature will, is certainly within the, the concept of and goal and policies that are set forth in, in the comp plan relating to protection of the, the wetlands. And so that policy NR is an acronym for natural resources, number 2.1. And in addition to that, this, this concept is, is again throughout the entirety of, of the comp plan, so on the imposition by Lucinda of this 10-foot buckle around the wetlands for the protection of the, the wetlands is, is an element that is, would otherwise not be, be part of the, the development that she had elected to simply just redo the existing dwelling on 81-2. So, and as part of the new development, there will also be a state-of-the-art onsite waste water treatment system that'll be installed. The existing system is aging, this system will again be state-of-the-art. So that is something that is obviously a, a significant benefit in terms of environmental protection and ecological concern. The third and final element that we view as consistency with the application and the Little Compton Comp Plan is the idea of preserving scenic vistas and, and whatnot. That is set forth in the Comp Plan Policy LU 1-1.1C. And so the, the concept here is that instead of developing two separate lots, which would have two principal dwellings, principal residential dwellings, two private sewer systems, two well, you know, well on each lot, private sewer on each lot and a primary dwelling on each lot. We're here limiting the, the impact on views by having the one structure just simply moved a bit to the north and centered within the, the upland area on, within, within the two lots. So those are the three key elements that we perceive as supporting the, the concept of the comp plan and the, the variance application. So I'm happy to address any questions that you might have and
So I'll, I'll lead off with some comments. I think net-net, the plan's very good. The in, in looking at, at the site plan or the proposed site plan, I would, I would suggest that, that there be one, a version of this that basically showed the new project only. I think it's very helpful with the one that you, you, you gave us to show the, the existing house and then the new house. But it may be here, but I missed the, the wetland buffer. You know, the, the points that you made about CRMC protection, the wetland buffer was a new element. I also think that the significance of raising the house for the base flood elevation is important over the existing structure. And that the, the you pointed out that the, let me get my directions correct, it's I think it's the, the eastern order along Jeremiah, the same side as the garage. You know, that, that, the, the, the house setback there is from the wetland edge is, is about the same as these existing structure. So you're you're maintaining most of the perimeter wetland setbacks from the, the encroachment of the existing structure. My point being that I, I think that your setback net improves the situation.
Yes, I, I agree, I agree.
And so I, just looking at, at all the lines of area of land within, area of land without, it's, it's, it's very difficult unless you understand all the terms and you draw them in different colors to appreciate the, what's there today and what you're proposing to do in the future.
Yeah, so, so it is a, a site plan, I would point out, you can feel free to, to supplement. Don did very carefully show the wetland perimeter with the triangles, the solid triangles and the the wave-like features. So you're right, you do, you kind of need a few colored pens to carefully do that. It's, it's, obviously it's difficult for Don to, to impose colors on the site plan for submission because of the duplication requirements and whatnot, but, but Don did do a terrific job of outlining the, the wetlands and, and whatnot. And I'm happy to, to share with you a color-coded version of that if, if that would be helpful. But your, your assessment is dead-on in terms of the net favorability in terms of pushing the improvements towards the center of the, the dry upland area. And at a minimum maintaining the distance between the structure and the, the current wetlands.
I had a question, this is Sal Marinosi, of, of, probably of Don. You, they mentioned utilizing the slab for additional, after, after demo utilizing an, an existing slab. Do we know whether the building official is going to accept that slab as a foundation for future building?
I don't know Sal, Don Maderos, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point in the, in the discussions. Only because we're at the point we're at now, I mean, I think that's a good question. But no, we haven't asked the building official that question.
Aside from the, those couple of concerns with the, you know, utilizing existing concrete, et cetera, I, I kind of like the, the whole concept. I think the concept is, is in tune with what we're trying to achieve with, with putting the two lots together and, you know, and making the best of the property there.
Thank you Sal, David Loth here, so I, I did want to clarify, the, the existing slab that may be utilized would be slab for the existing garage, okay, I just wanted to make that clear, that's currently shown as part of the, the existing dwelling, so it's that square area there and what's going to happen is that a portion of that slab is going to be abandoned so that there's at, at least a 10-foot buffer from the wetland. But again, as, as Don pointed out, the sufficiency of the slab for, for the demolition and the reconstruction of the 390-foot structure, square foot structure that is yet, yet to be determined, yet to be determined, but hopefully it'll be viable.
Are we talking about the slab 14.4?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Because it's so close and if they have to remove the slab, what does that, what does that do to us if we're utilizing it in an approval or, not approval, but acceptance, if you will, of the, the total package? If they have to in fact excavate and, and, and pour a new slab there? That, that's, I guess that would be my question to Mark too. Is Mark still with us?
Actually, he's not for some reason, I don't know what happened to him. His connection.
Probably his dinner was still on the table.
Yeah, so, so if I could just address that and perhaps Don could supplement, what, what I would suspect is that to the extent that there would need to be disturbance that close to the, to the wetlands that, you know, we're going to have to work closely with, with Scott and CRMC to ensure that, that any replacement of the slab or
Yeah.
whatnot is
That's my concern.
compliance with, with CRMC regulations.
I, I think our, our comments are basically in, in summary of the, the project and not, not into the specifics of what may or may not, you know, a detail of construction which will fall to CRMC and the building official.
Right, right.
If, if we, we think that this in total is in, in the spirit and, and support of the comp plan, that's, that's what we're trying to communicate.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mary Sutel, I just have one question about the in-law dining kitchenette. Is that, what is that going to entail being put in as a kitchenette? It's on the second floor, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so Mary, I'm sorry, are you looking at the, the architectural plans?
Yes.
Okay. So as, as I understand it, this is going to be a single-family dwelling. I, I don't know if Lucinda can maybe assist, I don't know if that was, might be considered a, like a guest, an overnight type. So I'm not quite sure, Lucinda, could you provide any insight on what that feature of the architecture?
Absolutely. It doesn't show on the plan, but I have, I have aging relatives, aunts and uncles, all of them have mobility issues and my aunt and uncle particularly from New Mexico often spend a couple of months with me, so this is a, a single, you know, on the second floor, it's a single floor sort of in-law suite with the addition of a, a sink, a stove top, a dorms, a dorm fridge and so that they can have some privacy if they want some alone time and they don't need to mix with the rest of the family or my friends that are visiting. And, you know, hopefully I'll be very healthy for a long time to come, but if, you know, I ever need someone to live in with me, they'd have a little bit of their own space. I was just kind of trying to think ahead in terms of, you know, having, dealing with my 90-year-old dad and my eight-year-old stepmother, it's like, ah, you know, gotta, gotta think ahead a little bit, so hopefully be able to live in it for a very long time and
Add a sink and a stove top and a dorm refrigerator?
Yes, that's the plan. Very, very simple, little like galley kitchen.
Want to move on to a, a motion, Mike?
Well, I have one more question, is, is the gravel driveway going to change at all or does that stay as it was?
It's actually not gravel now, it's sort of, I don't know exactly what it is, sort of part dirt and then the circle, the current circle is, is old gravel and it'll essentially stay, you know, something along those lines. Kind of make it cobblestone, be a little bit shorter obviously because the dri, it won't be quite as long a driveway, but you know, cobblestone with maybe grass in the middle or something like that.
It's still going to go down to the garage, right?
To the garage, the new garage, yes, but the current garage, it will no longer go to the current garage because the current garage is just going to be a studio storage area. And so it will no longer, that, that part of the driveway will no longer be, have to go there because that will no longer be a quote-unquote garage.
That's what I was seeing and I didn't
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that was probably just part of, of us trying to show the current, you know, footprint and the way everything's configured, but thank you for the question.
Lucinda Mary Sutel again, do you have to put in another septic or can you use what's there?
Uh, I, I'm planning on, even if I could use it, I'm planning on putting in a new one, I mean, everything's already going to be dug up, I just think it's kind of crazy to, you know, not put everything, you know, current as eco, environmental, storm safe as possible. You know, this deserves
Good move.
Just do it all at the beginning, kind of know when everything was done.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Repairs and maintenance and all the good stuff. Thank you for the question.
Well, just, just, the, the plan indicates a new proposed bottomless sand filter system.
Yep, Don, Don Maderos, that, that's correct, we, we have a design of a bottomless sand filter that we'll, we're sending into DEM for approval. We don't anticipate any issues. DEM, as you know, is very happy to take old septic systems out of commission and replace them with, with state-of-the-art advanced technology like the, the bottomless sand filter and the pretreatment tank that goes along with it. So, you know, like Dave Loth had said earlier, we're, we're really going to be improving the environmental attributes of the existing site with, with the proposed development.
So that, that, so the, what says approximate leaching field, that's the existing field that will go away?
That's correct.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And there's another one of those items, Mike, where there's two things on the site plan and it's, yeah, they do And there's another one of those items, Mike, where there's two things on the site plan and it's, yeah, they do show an outline for a bottomless though.
Oh yeah, I see it.
So Mark, you, you, you left us a little bit there, but I don't know if you could hear us.
I, I, well, I, I visited the site and I, and I have reviewed the plans quite thoroughly. So I, I missed whatever comments may have been made, but I'm still able to make a motion when it's All right, I make a motion that we send a letter to the zoning board. If, in fact, zoning board were to improve this, I find that it would be a minimal impact on the comprehensive plan. It would meet NR1 point capital A, which is groundwater protection, as David had mentioned. LU1 dot capital A, which is consistent with the land use goals in the comp plan. LU1 dot capital B, which would low density, which would, David also mentioned that we would be using a larger lot, so more property and less density. And lastly, LU2 dash A, which would be a minimum impact on the infrastructure, whereas you'll be going with a brand-new ISDS on the property.
I'll second that.
That was Sal Marinosi who made the second.
Roll call.
Might get easier if you just said their names and they either agreed or disagreed.
Okay, Bob Murphy?
Agree.
Mike Steers agrees. Helen Woodhouse?
Agree.
Mary Satell?
Agree.
Bob Torchia?
Agree.
Sal?
Agree.
Mark?
Agree.
And Richard?
Richard. Richard's on You got to be able to
Okay, so unanimous.
Unanimous. Well, Richard hasn't voted, but
Oh, I think he
He's
Is he muted?
Richard, if you, if you agree, can you raise your hand and I will pass that on to the, the group?
Whoops, I agree. Sorry.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time and listening.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, that takes care of that. Our next item of business is a petition for Leslie Fox, Fox property on plat 19, lot 17. And are you rep, representing her, Don?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm here with her, speaking on her behalf. She's here to speak for herself.
Yes, hello, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so what we have is Ms. Fox, she's in attendance here. Her property's plat 19, lot 17. It's on the Commons. It's on the corner of the Commons and Spring Lane. It's a, it's a quarter acre size lot. It predates zoning. It is zoned business. And so what, so there are a few attributes, I guess, that we need to talk about. One is, is it's a pre-existing lot of record because it's less than two acres. And it has less than 175 feet of frontage. It's also a residential use in a business zone, which is allowed. However, what, what happens is a provision in zoning, if you see note number 11 on the plan, section 14 dash 5.2D says dimensional requirements for a single household residents in the business district shall be the same as those required in the residence district. So even though we're zoned business, we have to adhere to the dimensional requirements of the residential district. So what, I, I guess I got a little bit ahead of myself. What, what Ms. Fox is proposing to do is put on, add a 160, 160 square foot screened porch to the rear slash side of her house. And what happens is by that 160 square feet, it puts her over the allowable 10% lot coverage. So we're, we're asking for a variance to exceed the allowable lot coverage. What Ms. Fox has done is it's, 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 it's a small house. There's no air conditioning. She's trying to get a little bit of relief from the heat, to be able to have a screened porch and protect her from the bugs and, and whatnot. Without, you know, overbuilding the lot, so to speak. So she's come up with a 10-foot by 16-foot screened porch. We're not, as, as you can see from the plan, the porch is not going to be any closer to the side setbacks than, than the existing structure. In fact, it's going to be less. It's, it's located on the rear of the structure, so you're not, you won't see it from the road. You won't see it from either road, the Commons Road or Spring Lane. The people on the east side is the Union Cemetery, so we're presuming that we're not going to get too many complaints from the residents of the cemetery.
But You let us know if you do.
Be sure to.
So that, that's it in a nutshell. I, I won't go on and on because it's, it's fairly simple and straightforward. So thank you.
So, Don, a couple of questions. The, the existing house is, I think it said 15.1% lot coverage? And that's
Yes.
That's the original house, right?
That's correct. That's the house and the existing house and the existing shed totaled to 15.1% lot coverage.
All right, so you're, you're, you're asking for 1.5% addition, right? Incremental.
Over, over what's already there, that's correct.
So then, the, the, you, you made a note that the porch was going to be on sonotubes. Is this, is this porch going to be winterized or
No.
A three-season porch? Is this, or is it a just a screened-in porch?
Right, that's it.
Yeah, so it's not going to be insulated and, and an additional room for the winter or year-round use?
No, that's not my plan.
Okay, I, because I think that's a very important distinction in, in what you're asking for.
It's not really a, a, you know, a full-time addition to the house. It's just a porch.
Correct. Just a porch. It's the roof, I guess, that makes the coverage an issue.
And I think it's important what you said, Don, that from the road, I mean, the way this is kind of tucked in an existing corner of the house. And, and the back, and you, you really can't see it even from one side because it drops in two feet also. The, the, the house exceeds the porch by two feet. I was noticing on the proposal.
That was on purpose to make it as small as possible, but also allow some room for a couple of pieces of furniture. Literally the only view is of the cemetery and the cemetery wall from the porch or to the porch.
They don't mind.
I don't think so. It's a nice view. I like it.
Well, I didn't say it wasn't. I just want to look at it from the outside.
Right, no, none of my
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, none of my neighbors will actually be able to see the porch, even my neighbors directly to the rear. They might see, you know, about a, a two-foot corner if they look through the bushes, but that's really the only vantage point to actually see the proposed porch.
My, my only concern is, is that in the end, you're going to be 18.06% lot coverage. That's almost double what's allowed. I mean, I, I realize the existing house is already 12.66. The shed is 3.8, and then your addition is 1.60. You're going to be up to 18.06%.
No, no, well, Mark, that's 18.06 square feet. The percentage will be 16.6.
Yeah, that's what I saw here.
Right. Right, I'm sorry, 16, right. Yeah, you know, 16 square feet, but you'll be 16%.
So actually, 6, 6.6%
Over.
Yeah.
That's correct. It's, it's 1.5% over existing. It's 6.6% over allowed.
Right.
Right.
But, I mean, it has a minimal impact on our plan, really.
Mark, are you just concerned with the figure or, or you don't like the, the way it's impacting the property?
Well, I, I mean, where do you draw the line between minor impact and major impact? You know, I mean, a lot of times we don't, we'll go with 1.5 or maybe even two. But, you know, this is a pretty substantial increase over it.
But the, the increase they're asking for is 1.5.
Correct.
And
Would, would she be willing to get rid of the shed to reduce her?
The shed is actually a two-car garage that's been there since 1930. I suppose I could, although I'd like to have my garage.
You know, that, that's not up to us, but, you know, the only thing up to us is the
The garage probably has some historical value. I, I think, I think, Mike, you made a good point, though, when you said, you know, it's on sonotubes and it probably, you know, this is an actual porch, you know, it's not, it's, it's, it's quasi-living space, but it's not inside the house. I think that makes a difference to me. It's kind of like somebody having a, a portico in front of the house, you know, too, you know, like an overhang.
Well, yeah, it's not constructed for, to be insulated and used year-round, so it's not a
I think that makes a little bit of a difference to me when, when we talk about impact to the lot, you know, and, and to this, the percentage of coverage. And
I, I under, I understand Mark's, Mark's concern, you know, I mean, if, if we keep going, the next thing is it'll be 7% or 10% or whatever. It'll keep on going up and up and up. But I think we have to look at each one of these situations on what does it really impact the neighbors, the existing area, and
It's not a preview.
Yeah, well, but I think it's important to also recognize that the, in the business zone, lot coverage is 15%. And we recently, I, maybe three or four years ago, we made the, the refinement in, in the dimensional requirements, that resident, new residential had to meet the, the dimensional requirements. But this is, from my perspective, this, if this was built in the 30s to the 15% lot coverage requirement within the business zone, then the, the application is asking for a 1.5 variance to put on a screened porch that's seasonal. But I, I recognize Mark's point about
Oh, I do too.
So anyway, that's
Well, the house was originally built as a bed and breakfast. It was commercial.
Okay.
Are you still having breakfast there?
It's bribery, Sal.
No, no, I'm just wondering if she said it was built as bed and breakfast, like she's not having breakfast there anymore.
Still
What do you think, Sal? How about making a motion, Sal? I think
I'll make a motion that while, while this is slightly bigger than, slightly larger than allowed by zoning, I think that the impact in a commercial zone is somewhat miniscule. And, and because of the type of, of use being just a portion of the year and not a, a full addition to the house. And because of its proximity to side lot lines and where it does sit, I think it meets our, our smell test, if you will, with the comprehensive plan. I think that it's in line with what we're trying to achieve in the town. So I'd like to make a motion that it, we approve it or, or accept it for the zoning board.
I'll second that.
Okay. I, I think it'll, it need a little refinement in writing, but other than that, I think we got the message, Sal.
As long as they know what I mean.
Yes, yes, yes.
I was hoping Sal would make a better motion than I would make, but I mean, you're, you're doing a good job, Sal.
Well, I, I just hope you second it.
Yeah, I did second.
Okay, so Robert Torchia?
In favor.
In favor. Ellen?
Favor.
Mary?
Yep.
Mark?
No.
No, Bob?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
I'm in favor.
Richard?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor because it's a commercial zone.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Good luck. We're the easy ones.
I, that's what I'm worried about. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
So our next item is a petition from Sean Martin of 18 South Shore Road. I don't know if he is with us.
He's in the town hall with Carol.
Might have to have him sit at my desk in order to talk because I'm not sure he can do it on his own. I'll get him for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm here. Hello, everybody.
Hi, Sean.
Hi, Sean. How you doing?
All right. All right, Mike, do you want me to, do you want me to start off?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this, this lot, plat 32, lot 47, it's a little over 15,000 square feet in size. It's a pre-existing substandard lot of record owned by Sean Martin. It's vacant. And, and Sean hired us to do soil testing and design work and survey to, with the expectation of him being able to get approval to build a three-bedroom house with a two-stall attached garage and a covered porch. We, we have an approved advanced treatment system with denitrification as an added feature, approved by DEM, which fits nicely in the, in the back of the property or the east side. We've set the house back 50 feet. The front of the porch is 50 feet back from the road, so we're, we're respecting the view corridor along South Shore Road by setting the house back 50 feet. We're meeting the side in rare setbacks as well required by zoning. So what we are is we, similar to the last petition, we are, we need a variance to exceed the maximum lot coverage. The maximum lot, allowed lot coverage is 10%. As, as I said, this is a vacant lot, so there is no existing value. But the proposed lot coverage is 11.8%, so what we're asking for is relief to exceed the maximum lot coverage by 1.8%. We, we looked at this for a while. Um, we, we looked at this for a while. Um, however, when, when existing boundaries can't be changed, you're, you're kind of left with what you have. Um, I know Sean's looking to build a three-bedroom house. It's a very modest size, foot and 30 feet by 32 feet, a 10-foot covered farmer's porch on the front, which is going to look really, really good, um, in a two-stall garage. It does put us slightly over the maximum lot coverage, like I said. However, um, what Sean's asking for here is, is no different than, except you could argue it's probably smaller than most of the existing, um, houses in the neighborhood that are on adjoining substandard pre-existing lots. So we, we think we're, we're asking for something that's reasonable. Um, Sean wants to, is going to live there. It's going to be his primary residence. He wants it to look good for himself and the neighbors, um, and, and, you know, the townspeople in general. Um, he's kind of picked the minimum size that really is, is feasible for, you know, for, for realistic, uh, use. And so we, we, we think we're, um, together with the advanced treatment system, with the denitrification as an added feature, we think that we're, um, you know, protecting the environment, doing what we can. Um, and, and we believe we have a, we have a solid, um, viable application proposal.
I met with Sean on the site. We talked about the, uh, the 1.8% that it's over. Um, the, one of the things that was offered was to go to a one-size, uh, one-stall garage. Um, but if that happened, then it would require a shed, um, to store his lawn care items and stuff. Uh, it didn't seem to make any sense to save 0.8% lot coverage to inconvenience him like that. Um, it, it, it's a very nice layout. It's well thought of. It's an existing piece of property. Um, I, you know, I think there's too many advantages and I can list them later. But, uh, I met with him and he, he's just serious that he, he would like to have a residence in town.
The, uh, is this, is this porch like the, uh, like the last green dent porch we looked at? Is this an open bottom porch, Sean?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, open bottom. Just roof over the top.
Farmer's porch.
Yeah, farmer's porch. So it'll, it'll never be part of the house. It'll only be a porch, if you will.
It's just.
It'll be attached, but it won't be living space.
It won't be living space.
It won't be living space.
Or.
Feeling safe on the porch, Sal.
Okay. Well, we can stop there and have a, a beer once in a while. I just wanted to know if, you know.
Come on by, Sal.
Nice breeze there too, Sal.
I, I would like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we take this plan as, uh, submitted and, um, send a letter off to the zoning board saying that, um, we approve this, that it meets our approval with minimum, uh, impact on the, uh, comp plan and that it would be, uh, an asset to, uh, to the area.
Well, would, would you allow me to reword that a little bit for Bob?
Yeah, you could, you could. I think you'll do a better job, but I, I was trying my darkest to do it.
I, I make a motion that we send a letter to the zoning board saying that we find this is a very minimal impact to the comprehensive plan, but we find that under H1 dot capital B, uh, it meets housing stock goals for year-round living. Uh, I find that it meets the goals of ED dash one, which is jobs to stay in town. He is a town employee. This would allow him to stay in town, which is one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. It also lives, allows him to live right adjacent to his mother. So as she aged, he could be of help to her. And then the, the last one is the ED1 dash capital C, which is town employee D E, D, yeah, DPW. Ah, I couldn't get that one out. Um, and also, uh, it's NH1F, which is the new and improved ISDS that will be installed. Um, I just feel there's too many advantages. What's happening?
Can I second it now?
Yeah, right.
Okay, I, I stop. I'm done.
Oh, thank God.
Wow, I, I knew all that, Mark, but I just kind of thought I'd shorten it a little.
Well, I'll, I'll. You wanted to challenge me, right, Bob?
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
I mean, I was writing that all down, but I kind of lost my speed on it, you know, with all those.
It's hard to write and talk at the same time.
He just, he keeps going with those interferences and he's not going to get anybody to make a motion in the future.
Right, right, right. All right, well, I'll either second the motion or, or Sal, you can second it. Go ahead, whatever.
Second it.
So do you second it, Sal?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call on, uh, Bob Torchette?
I agree, uh, but I do want to point out, I think, we're trying to slippery slope, keep on saying that just because things are, sonotubes, uh, uh, they don't count as, as lot coverage. I don't think.
We didn't say that.
Well, no, I know, but with the last two, people found that, uh, nuance to be acceptable. Uh, so I just want to make that comment. I agree. I think it sits back nice from the road and, and I think it's, it's, uh, I, I agree on all other counts, but I do think that the, uh, we're, we're kind of finding nuance with the, uh, with the sonotubes.
Mary?
Yeah, that, that was my point with the last one is that even though it's on sonotubes, it still is lot coverage. And at some point we have to decide, well, I don't think we have to decide. There are different merits to different things, but, um, I think you have to be careful.
Yep. Well, well taken, though.
But we, we have that roll call, so.
Okay, Bob, so yes. Mary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'll be a yes, but I'm gonna support Robert there. I think that we, we have to, uh, think about, I make a distinction in my own mind. If, if there's an empty lot and you hire an architect to build a, a house that meets zoning, they'll meet zoning. And, uh, I think there are always good reasons to want more than zoning permits. Uh, and it's one thing when there's an existing structure that you're amending, uh, as opposed to starting out with a blank slate. But I think this sounds like a good project and everybody thinks it's, meets the requirement, so we're, I'm in favor. So I think that's a unanimous, oh, Richard?
I'm in favor.
He said he's in favor.
Yep, he's in favor. So everybody's in favor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Good luck, Sean.
Thank you.
So now, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, uh, planning board business and, um.
Oh, she died out? Thanks, Carol.
We had, had invited Adam Yorks to chat with us with regard to.
Yeah, the county was hot.
Housing. And I don't know if, if Adam's connected or not. I know he hasn't had the call-in number. He confirmed that with, with me earlier today.
He, he is here. Hang on.
Okay.
Hi, Adam. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Good evening to everybody.
So, um, Adam and I had a chat about, uh, housing and, and, uh, that's, has been an important topic in town lately and, uh, he asked if he could chat with us about, uh, our thoughts that, you know, we, we wrote section in the comp plan on housing and, uh, the current state of things. And so, uh, he's jo- agreed to join us tonight and ask us some questions or give us some thoughts and have a roundtable conversation.
Thanks, thanks, Mike, and thanks to, uh, everyone else on the board and Carol for, uh, arranging for me to join you all. Um, yeah, I kind of just wanted to, uh, find out what, like, recent, uh, applications regarding affordable housing that might have come across the planning board. Um, and maybe just, uh, what, the way you all see the role of the planning board in making affordable housing happen in Little Mountain.
Well, you, you heard, we, you and I chatted about this, so I'm going to defer and, and ask other people to just jump in and, and, uh, give you their comments.
Well, uh, this is Sal Marinosi. Uh, uh, a while back, I had a little meeting with, uh, town council president and, uh, we discussed, um, uh, affordable housing and, uh, in, in, in the context of affordable housing, we discussed, uh, uh, housing for the elderly mostly. And, uh, which is, you know, quasi affordable housing also. And, uh, when, uh, we were discussing it, we were talking about, um, areas in the town that we felt were suitable, you know, or could, if you will, um, you know, um, lend a, it's, uh, land or areas that would lend themselves to, um, uh, an elderly population that perhaps couldn't, uh, drive anymore or, uh, required walking paths or, and, uh, what we were talking about is something that could be utilized, that would be near the common. And, uh, and, uh, we, we talked about it extensively. We, we even talked about certain parcels. And, uh, and, uh, one of, one of the things we talked about is maybe it could be multiple parcels of, uh, like, almost like a PUD, if you will, you know, with, uh, two here, two there and, but around different areas. And when we were talking about it, we said, yeah, but no one has, you know, stepped up. And, uh, and, uh, I think that, uh, as a planning board, we, we would love to see something come before us, uh, because we spent time on it on the comprehensive plan. We spent a lot of time on it in discussing it. Uh, we would love to see something come to us that was, uh, that made sense. Something that fit. Well, what you don't want to do is shoehorn something in a neighborhood and, uh, in, in, uh, if you will, disrupt the neighborhood in a way that is not good for the existing residents or the people who are going to be there. Um, I, I think that, um, there are areas in the town that could be utilized, but, uh, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough fit because this town has real issues with water, sewer, um, transportation, and, uh, there's, there's not a lot of upland that's available that is in areas that you want to put people in on that basis, you know, with, uh, a number of units. Now, when you talk about affordable housing, naturally you could talk about a unit if you wanted to also. And, uh, I think that if somebody came to us with a couple of those units, we would be, I think all of us would be welcoming, you know, to, to look at something that way. And, uh, because we, we've all discussed it. But again, it's kind of like walking into Martha's Vineyard and saying, I want to put affordable housing over here. Uh, in, uh, a lot of places, it just doesn't work. I mean, the common is a, an area I thought that would lend nicely for elderly because you have, uh, restaurants, you have churches, you have, uh, you have the town hall, you have the community centers, you know, you have, uh, and, uh, if you even have transportation that comes out of the community centers for, for the elderly. So, uh, that, that's what we were discussing, Bob Munchen and myself. And, uh, I think that's where we have to look, uh, first because, uh, our population in our town is not getting any younger. I know, just ask me. And, uh, and, you know, I think a lot of us who live here want to live here. And that, that doesn't mean we have to live in the house we live in or, you know, in a large house. But, uh, are you playing the drums or are you typing?
I'm sorry, I was just taking a couple of notes, Sal.
Oh, all right.
I won't play the drums right now.
I, I was, I was just saying that, uh, I think that's where I'm at with it. I think that we have to, that's the road I would like to go down. I, I think we can do a good job if we can cut out some parcels for elderly. And I, I think we, and find some, and the town collectively too, should, could get involved in, uh, you know, getting somebody interested in developing a, a parcel if it was available. If we could, you know, actively search for one. And, uh, and, uh, and when I say actively, I mean that. I mean, uh, you know, maybe put a committee together to, uh, find, uh, a couple of parcels that would be available for that type of development. Uh, I know I would love to see that, you know, because, uh, it's a, it's a nice town for, for that type of population to, uh, spend their, uh, winning years, if, if you know what I mean. It's a, it's a nice quiet town and, uh, there's a lot of amenities for the elderly in the town.
Uh, Adam, are you, sorry, Sal.
Go ahead. No, go right ahead.
Uh, Adam's, a little bit of history. Mary's to tell. Um, when I was on the conservation commission back in the early 80s, we had come up with a plan for cluster housing for this issue. Um, where you would, um, let's say you take 10 acres and you would cluster, um, for a better word, you know, s- single dwellings or, back then, we weren't really thinking of condos or apartments, but something like, like that. And then you'd have a, a huge open space. Um, so that was shut down, uh, by the town council. And I also think, and I, I, uh, Mike, didn't the, uh, planning board years ago try to come up with a, um, plan similar to that? That also was, uh, shut down by the town council?
Well, we attempted, um, conservation development.
Right, it's different. Yeah.
But, but, um.
It's all in the wording.
It's all in the wording, but we, we, uh, I think that the, the, the real, um, effort that we all put forward on wa- was the, the Country Harvest project, uh, which then, um, didn't work out for all kinds of reasons.
Right.
Um, as well as site selection and, and neighborhood involvement and whatnot. So, um, there, there hasn't been other than single unit, uh, you know, the Arkans put together that the project in the, uh, on Willow Avenue. And, um, there've been single units after that, but, uh, w- we haven't been presented with a real project for, uh, multiple housing since the Country Harvest.
I, I think, Adam, that it's, uh, I think this town is very hesitant about going that route, um, for affordable housing. Um, most people are, they don't, they don't, they're afraid it'll turn into condos and maybe it would be, uh, down near the water and stuff like that. So I think that when we were working on the 80s, that was the real reason it, um, didn't get any, didn't get any backing and that was, we were just trying to figure out affordable housing, uh, by using this clustered, uh, method and it, uh, just was not acceptable.
Well, the, the cluster method is when, I mean, they call it, there's, you know, PUDs, cluster method. There's a lot of the, everybody just said that exact thing, that it's all in the wording. Uh, the cluster method is actually a good method if you've got the site because you get the maximum coverage, you get the most open space.
Yeah.
Because you can, you can designate open space all around it, uh, to be utilizable. All the, the, the small homes are in that one area. I mean, I, I've seen them even utilize, uh, a, a cluster method to, because you can put in, uh, 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 a water system for all the units. You can. A water system for all the units, you can, there's a lot of things you can do with a cluster method, but. But I think the first thing that this town has to do is find some sites because. You can come up with all the terms you want, but if you don't find a few parcels. That you know will support some housing and they can't be just a lot. Because, you know, a lot of the places where we have just a lot, Mark's concern was that, you know, we're. We're going over the the square footage. There's not much you can put on a lot of these lots and and and. I know there's a bunch of them in my neighborhood and they could be affordable housing. But the houses would be so small that you'd have, if they were affordable housing, you'd have kids on the roof. And 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 they could be, they could be utilized for elderly. But when you build elderly for just individual units, it's very expensive when you're putting them on individual lots. That's why I say apostle is something that we should be looking at and.
Let's, one of the things I discussed with with Adam was there the fact that we sort of changed the terminology. To attainable housing from affordable housing because affordable housing comes with the state's definition. And deed restrictions. So one one of the biggest obstacles we have is is the fact that. In order for a unit to count as affordable, it has to be deed restricted and so people that elderly people that want to live in their own home. That would would qualify. Don't qualify because they're not willing to give up that asset. The other thing is that we. Were were just like the the lot that we reviewed. For Sean Martin, you know, if we found lots like that, then we have that, we have the provision to put a duplex. You know, and put two units in for people in town and try to, but but those units. Would not be deed restricted, you know, you'd you'd have to figure out how to do it. So the the income requirements. Don't restrict the people in town that are working that don't fit the state's formula. So that, you know.
That's that's a tough one.
It's a very challenging situation because we want to provide housing for farmers and people that work in town. Teachers and please, you know, everybody. But tha- that's not the state definition.
One of, one of the things that we did do in the eighties was if you did a subdivision and it was over five lots. One of the lots would have to be given for affordable purposes or they would have to give twenty percent of the value to the town to use. Towards affordable housing. Unfortunately, nobody has done a subdivision in town over five lots because. We don't have any areas that are that big that aren't being farmed or owned by the land trust. So that hasn't worked out as we planned, but one of the things that I would contemplate is. Maybe the suggestion to the housing trust that they send a letter to the town council. Asking that they appeal to the state legislature for an amendment to the. Acting legislation that we allow the elderly who stay in town and get a reduced. Tax rate to count in our affordable numbers by giving us relief to the thirty year. Restriction on the deed. That would in increase the numbers, but not really increase the amount of affordable housing. There are several pieces of land in town that I think it was like seven or eight years ago. I went with the building official of the time and we went to five lots that the town actually owned. All five of those were buildable by his standards. Three of those are still available. So they could be looked at. They're not big lots, but they were lots that could. Carry a single family home with a septic system in a well and meet our building standards. We might have to increase the lot coverage a little bit or something, but those are things, but I I think if you can. Get the enabling legislation changed because of the significant. Obstacles that Little Compton runs into. Transportation is one of them. We have citizens' transportation in town. But we don't have any transportation that comes to town anymore that goes out of town. Other than the citizens who take some like to fall over to go shopping. But I I I think that the the so- something that could be done immediately would be the letter to the council. Asking them to ask the legislature for some relief on the legislation that was passed. With the thirty year restriction on the deeds. Because then those would then qualify. So that's one of the things we could do. And I would be happy to meet with somebody on the housing trust, housing trust to look at these three pieces of property that the town owns now. That I I I'm assuming they still would meet the standards for a building. That would give you a piece of property. I don't know how much that's going to help though, because then you need to look for funding. To put something on at the town could own, but there are grants out there and I I don't know how much activity. The housing trust is entertaining in looking for these grants. There are federal grants, there are state grants. At one point, there was a fair chunk of money that was set aside for Little Compton, but nobody requested it. So it never, it had to be reissued to somebody else, so. Those are all things that could be being done immediately. I don't know whether the acting. Active legislation that's out there now would be changed because of our unique characteristics, but. It seems to me that a a letter from the town council to the legislature might be. Worth its weight in gold.
Mark?
Yes.
This is Carol. I just wanted to comment on that, that the town has in the past been very active in conversations with. They did not make an actual petition to the general assembly, but we were told flat out, no, that would not. Counted towards the state's affordable housing. They did not care that we didn't have. Transportation or the logistical problems that we have, so I'm I'm not sure that that's something that could even. Be attempted. The other comment is, I know that the housing trust, they intended a meeting last week, but they were not able to. They're meeting again on the thirteenth and they are reorganizing themselves and going to come up with a strategic plan, so I think some of. Be allowed to happen in that venue before other groups start pouring in their comments to them. Them a chance to get starting started and off the ground. Before we start shooting. Too many suggestions their way. I mean, I know they're getting quite a few suggestions already.
Well, I I I think that. The housing trust could work with the land trust and when you get these huge purchases of land. That, you know, parcel could be portioned off out of a fifty acre parcel to build. Affordable housing or elderly housing. It's a way that it doesn't cost anything really for the land. It's it's already being, people are already being paid for it. And, you know, further, you know, I think that you may want to try and get a share in the real estate tax on house sales. To help generate funds to build affordable housing or for the town to own parcels that have affordable housing on them. Those are two ways that you can work with groups in town to get both land and funds. I think it's, I think it's a difficult path, but I do think it's a a path that. Might might get you land and 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 money.
To clarify, I know this is Carol being a little persnickety here. The agricultural conservancy trust could need work with housing trust when they have someone come before them to try and negotiate. Land for affordable housing if they agree. Their funds that they receive already for the real estate sale are restricted for. The types of things that they do now, which is preservation of land for open space and that sort of stuff. It could not go to the housing trust. They would have to go either seek their own name. Through a petition from the council or petition to change the existing. Agricultural Conservancy Trust legislation.
That that's how I would see it happening.
Yeah, I. Been advised by the general assembly themselves that that's not going to be that favorably, but that doesn't mean you can't. And again, something that the housing trust should be petitioning the council and and they do have the as as. Two meetings ago with the council, they've agreed they want to work with the housing trust to come up with a strategic plan. They're moving in the right direction and I and I think it's just going to take some time to come up to the right. Decisions of what's what's.
Right, I agree. I think they have to push, you know.
I think the answer, the short term answer, and when I say short term, within the next five to ten years. Is for us to to identify, if you will, possibilities. Site possibilities ourselves and then let, you know, the town. Or surrounding contractors of interest know that we're looking into. This type of venue, if you will, and and because the other answer is for them to be utilizing. Land that's set aside, tax relieved, involved with families. I think that is such a long term possibility that we're never going to meet our goal that way. I think that. If we really want to have some affordable housing, what we have to do is. Take the bull by the horns and and identify some parcels in the town that are possibilities. Talk to the people who own them and and see whether we can get people interested in. Getting into a situation like that and coming up with a plan that truly will meet all our needs. And with that, I I've said enough.
Well, Adam, do you have any, you've been very quiet in this whole conversation.
I've I've just been enjoying taking in the different perspectives here because I feel like there's a wealth of of good ideas here. From all your experience. Well, a couple of the questions I had were. So as far as incentivizing. Deed restrictions, is is that something that in your experience like hasn't really. Brought enough interest, like is is the the deed restriction just too big of a hurdle and there's. Few options to incentivize it for for landowners to really seize that and and try to. Create more affordable housing units.
I talked to two legislatures and and both of them said that they would review it. Which means nothing except they'd listen to whatever got sent to them. But I think that's more than we got in the past before it was just, don't bother because it's not worth it. We won't, we won't change it or we won't listen to it, but. It was encouraging to me that they said they would at least listen to it. I mean, the enabling legislation would have to be changed. But it it seemed that it was possible that it could be changed just for Little Compton because of its unique character. But again, that that's nothing positive. That doesn't mean that it would happen or that they would be in favor of it. They just said they would listen. And I think that's a step forward as far as I'm concerned and I and I I totally agree with Carol. I remember in the past when it was just shut down immediately and. You know, don't bother because it's not going to work.
Right. In terms of the deed restrictions, and this is Carol talking. We tried for many years to get people to consider doing a deed restriction so that it could be qualified. But people are not willing to do a ninety nine year restriction on their property. They, you know, they see their grandchild or their son or daughter and they want that land to go to them at some point in time and ninety nine years is just too long.
Okay. So what would a a cooperative acquisition? Based on the partnership between the housing trust and the ag trust and the planning board, like how would, how would that work? Would it, would it be like the housing trust would would tee off on a particular parcel? And and that's what would set it in motion or how how do you all see that happening?
I think that really has to be dealt with with the the land trust. You know, if and if they can partner with you then and it may come before us or it may not even need to come before us. There may be. An arrangement that the housing trust can make with the land trust and it would just, you know, happen because you're still. You're still in a position then when you need funds to utilize the property, but. We really wouldn't have anything to do with. What the L C A C T would work out with the housing trust.
So I'll just say that, you know, an example of of. What did happen, right? When the, when the town, the trust bought the Ponce property. The Ponce gave a portion of the property to the town to merge with the school. So one could imagine that there might be property where an arrangement could be ra-. Arranged where the landowner would. Give some property for affordable housing. When the balance of the property was being preserved and and maintained in farming. But, you know, every, every situation is unique and every landowner is different and their motivations are different. But. I guess the South's point, you know, you got, you got to work with the properties and the landowners and. See, explore all all the opportunities as they come along.
Right, I think you have to get the land trust on board when they're making the offer to buy the property, to inform the owners and and let them know that part of it might go to. The housing.
Well, see, the 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 trust can't give the land away.
Right, it has to be.
It would, it would be the landowner, landowner's desire. So anyway, it's it's nothing we can. Sort of dictate each, as I say, each opportunity comes along and it's a matter of the organizations working together and communicating.
But but the land trust could say as a condition of our purchase, we would, we would like to see you. Kated piece of this to affordable housing.
Well, the land trust can't can't spend any more than the lots are praised for. So you 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 start there and if you, you know, if it if, anyway.
Just just remember that the land trust is under a different enabling legislation, which would need to be changed in some circumstances. Or it would have to be a private matter where the town agreed with the landowner to do the purchase. But I, Adam, I just want to say to you that at any time that the land trust. I mean, the housing trust had any kind of concern or wanted to come forward to us, I think that it's unanimous that we would be willing to help in any way we can. You know, we're somewhat limited, but we're open to, you know, anything that the housing trust may submit to to us. For consideration.
Great, great. Well, that. Is a lot to think about. I really appreciate hearing everyone's thoughts on that. And I'm looking forward to, as Carol mentioned, that, you know, there's meetings later in the month. Where we might start to see. A a plan kind of materialize. So I was just kind of as a, as a. Someone who's lived in this town more or less for thirty years, just trying to catch up on on what things have happened, what what. Things have been thrown at the wall, what sticks, what doesn't, and I feel like this was really. And I feel like this was really helpful to talk to you all.
Well, good. Well, thanks for asking, Adam.
Yep.
And as Mark said, we're always interested in, in the conversation and working with the trust and seeing what we can figure out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you, Adam.
Nice to see you too, Mary.
Have fun on those drums.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I mute before I start playing them. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I, I know it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to, to have a vote to add to the agenda some planning board business. Not that we can vote on it, but just we can discuss it and maybe at next, put it on next month's agenda.
Make a motion.
I, I'm making a motion to add to the agenda discussion about planning board business having to do with applications, checklists and referral lists.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Richard?
He's muted.
Richard, you're muted still.
Okay.
Mark, yes.
That was, that was Richard saying yes.
Okay, well, it's unanimous then, so. We have not required that checklists be submitted with applications. The subdivision regulations require it. We haven't required it. I, I would like to start doing that. I can't do it without a vote, because we've allowed it to not be done for a while. So the board would have to vote in favor of it. And also, in the application process, there's a referral sheet, which we've never included in the application. But it is actually part of the application, which probably should be added back to it. Basically, because I've heard from the fire chief and the police chief that there are issues and by adding that referral sheet to the application, I think we could usurp some of these issues that are arising. And I'm sorry about my phone, but it just wants to keep ringing tonight. But, but I think that if we could add those two things.
I make a mention that you answered the phone.
Yeah. Hello, nobody there. Now we got the answering machine. But anyway, I, I, I just think those two things should get some discussion maybe next month and, and we'll put it on the agenda so we can vote on it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think.
So, and any, any other items, Mark, that you think should be reviewed on the application?
Those, those two things especially, more so with the fire chief. I met with him last week, not on any planning board business, but on another issue. And he's not seeing the plans until after they've already been approved. And there were several that he had issues with. And part, and part of the problem was, is that things that were depicted on the plan never got constructed. So if he gets involved earlier, he thinks that that may help. So if we add the referral sheet to the application, which it should be anyway, because it's part of the application, that they will have to have the check off from the fire and police before we get a certification of completeness. But I, I, I make, I make a motion at this. You can't make a motion.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion, though. I make a motion that we file our correspondence in the circular, I mean, in the appropriate file.
I'll second that.
All those, anybody opposed to that?
I'll second it.
Then we need another motion.
Oh.
Oh, make a motion to adjourn.
Go adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Anyone opposed? No, excellent.
So one's sake for the next one. I can look in my calendar.
When's the next meeting?
Yeah. Well.
It's Tuesday in September.
Evening of the primary.
September 1st.
Okay, September 1st, son.
Wow.
Wow.
Summer.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all, be safe.
Thank you.
Carol.
Yeah.
Hey, Bob, Murphy, get a haircut, will you, for God's sake?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting one sale and a couple.